If we can suspend the rules again, I'd like to bring up the first resolution in item seventeen A. This is a resolution that has to do with CenterPoint, I think. Is there somebody here representing?
Yes.
CenterPoint. Let me read the item. Resolution R 2019-12, Resolution of the City of Friendswood, Texas, suspending the May tenth, two thousand and nineteen effective date of CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC's requested rate change to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates, approving continued cooperation with Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities, hiring Lloyd Goslink attorneys and consulting services to negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation and appeals, requiring reimbursement of city's rate case expenses. Finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel.
Motion in a second.
Discussion?
Just as a reminder, we've taken similar action in years past when a public utility proposes an increase in their rates. We're simply intervening and asking for additional times to evaluate that rate increase to see if there's opportunities to reduce the magnitude of that raise.
Okay. Any questions for our representative?
No, I was not. I was here to, you know, if anyone has any questions, you can email them. I left my card with the city manager. If you have any questions, I'll direct them to the proper channels with the company. Okay?
Thank you. No other discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Thanks for being here. Find my place. Thank you. Back to item twelve, communication from committees and special reports. Fourth of July Steering Committee Annual Report Given by Vice Chair Barbara Blanchard.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's my pleasure to represent the Fourth of July Steering Committee again this year. On Thursday, July fourth, the committee and the City of Friendswood proudly present the hundred and twenty-fourth annual Fourth of July celebration. This year's theme is "There's No Place Like Home." Excuse me. The day begins at ten a.m. with the grand parade featuring over a hundred entries from Friendswood and around the state. This year's, we're honoring as Grand Marshal Alan Rasmussen, Senior Executive Vice President of Hometown Bank. We choose him for his overwhelming generosity in supporting all events in Friendswood, the city, the Friendswood ISD, oh, thank you, and the chamber. You made me lose my train of thought. After the parade, in Stevenson Park, there'll be rides, games, food, live entertainment, and more than fifty booths until three thirty. Excuse me. The evening program is at Centennial Park and begins at seven thirty. Starting at six thirty, we will have our free shuttle service from Friendswood United Methodist Church and from the Friendswood High School. The entertainment for the night will be the Molly Ringwalds. Following up this entertainment, we'll have the fantastic fireworks extravaganza choreographed to patriotic music. For more information or to sign up to be in the parade or have a booth, call the Parks and Rec Department at two eight one nine nine two three two two zero. We would like to thank this year's committee members. Excuse me. Chair Tommy McDonald, Anthony Christine and Stacy Scarpa, Michelle Diacek, Stephanie Karakoskis. These are two Scarpas that got married. Daryl Fails, Rafino Ramirez, Terry Corbett, Kathy Molinaro, Terry McKee, and Renee Rives. The Friendswood Chamber of Commerce liaison is Diane Haas this year. Our city council liaison is Trish Hanks. And from the Parks and Recreation Department, the director, James Tony, and his wonderful staff, Michael Boyett, Kimberly Ramirez, Heather Whitty, Katie Blanchard, Cole Mendenhall, Gary Williams, and all the park staff. I am Barbara Blanchard. I am the vice chair of the committee, and I thank you for giving me your time.
Thanks, Barb.
Thanks, Mo.
Okay. Item thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding approving an appointment, reapportment to the West Ranch Management District Board of Meredith Levine to a four-year term ending June first, two thousand and twenty-three, to replace Frank Harper, whose term expires June first, two thousand and nineteen, and the reapportment of Sawyer Blackburn to a four-year term ending June first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Item fourteen, discussion and possible action regarding approval of membership to Bay Area Houston Economic Partnership.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Could you explain to everybody what this is and what we're paying for and all that?
So, BayHEP, we stepped away from BayHEP a couple of years ago. They charged dues to be a member. At the time, we decided to take a break, didn't renew our membership there. We were treating them more like an economic development piece. They really don't do that. They're really an advocacy group for the area. They definitely go out and talk about this region to businesses, to companies that are looking to relocate. They do a lot for us in the way of bringing people to this area. In the past few months, even though we're not paying members, I've been a member of the mayor's roundtable that BayHEP organized. All the mayors around the lake meet about monthly, and we have done a lot in regards to writing resolutions, signing resolutions, and sending them to the state legislation on issues that we have problems with, that the state's doing so. From an advocacy point of view, they're very good with that as well, and I think behooves us to sort of pay our dues. You know, they are doing a lot for us. Their director is a guy named Bob Mitchell, and I met with him last week and asked him what our dues would be to come back in, and I think he gave us a pretty reasonable rate to come to rejoin. So, our dues would be fourteen thousand dollars a year, and I think worth every penny for the advocacy that they do for us. So, probably more than you wanted, Steve, but that's how I feel.
I've been involved with BayHEP for fifteen years, and I haven't seen a lot of economic development in Friendswood because of them, but I do think that they strengthen the region. And when the region is strengthened, we benefit by the people who can move to Friendswood, buy the nice houses that are being built in Friendswood, and volunteer and contribute to our community. So, I think we should have a seat at the table, and I think we should try to work to keep our entire region, this area especially, strong. So, I'm in for it. I'm, I'm, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, Mayor, Council, I went to Galveston County Day, and included in my group was Larry Milliken, who's city council in League City, Scott Livingston, Economic Development Coordinator with League City, and Bob Mitchell. And I found him very engaging. I had never met Bob Mitchell, and we went to visit several senators and also staff. And when he advocated, he advocated for the entire region. He didn't exclude Friendswood from that. So, to tell you the truth, I liked him. So, I'll support you on this one.
Okay. All in favor? Seven, nothing. Item fifteen, discussion and possible action regarding the termination of a joint agreement with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District for election services.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in a second.
Can we explain?
Rod, you want to, Melinda, you want to? I didn't give you a heads up, Melinda. I was going to ask you.
That's okay. For many years, we've had a joint election agreement with a Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, and since we are now contracting with Galveston County, we will no longer be able to provide those services. So, they will need to contract with Galveston County as well if they choose to do so. So, we need to formally end our agreement.
Got it. Okay. All in favor? Seven, nothing. Item sixteen, discussion and possible action regarding implementation of the recommendations of the Drainage Subcommittee. I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second.
So, earlier this evening, council, you heard me go through a presentation of all eleven recommendations from the Drainage Subcommittee. Three of those recommendations are before you this evening. The first one is a resolution later on tonight. The other two recommendations that I wanted to discuss with you was, one, beefing up our drainage criteria as it pertains to development, new projects, new development. I don't have the full data here yet because there's quite a bit of work that's involved in updating the data or the criteria. I want to make sure that council's on board with advocating for greater mitigation and drainage requirements as it pertains to new developments, namely, from the standpoint of the rainfall intensity curve for our region adopting the higher standard by Atlas fourteen through NOAA, which would require a greater amount of onsite detention for new projects. So, currently, as it stands, if you develop a piece of property in the City of Friendswood, whatever flow in cubic feet per second come off that property during a hundred-year intensity storm cannot be altered and cannot be increased post-development for a one-hundred-year storm. Obviously, if you were to increase the amount of rainfall per hour as it pertains for a one-hundred-year storm, then that requires a lot more mitigation onsite. So, beefing up the standard helps work both ends against the middle to reduce the impact of new development within the watershed on Friendswood. This is something that's going to be done in joint partnership with other agencies within the watershed. Obviously, if we put our, hold ourselves to a higher standard, but those roundists do not, we're unduly impacting ourselves. But if there is interest on council's part moving forward, I would like to move that legislation forward. The other aspect of this is hiring additional engineering assistants. As I mentioned earlier tonight, we have, historically, we've had one professional engineer on staff dedicated solely to engineering activities within the city. Our workload has increased sufficiently to where a second professional engineer on staff is needed, separate from drainage, but especially when taken into consideration drainage concerns. This individual would be the person to further, or the constancy of purpose, to see these projects, whether the bond passes or not, see the drainage improvements furthered within the City of Friendswood so that we can minimize the impact of future storms within our community.
Any comments? I think we're all in agreement with the city manager on all of these. Looks like he had something to say. Yes, sir.
On both items. On the first one, I think it's a great idea. There will be more of this, though. I think as time goes on and we work with other cities, we're going to have to think about continually increasing standards, but we have to do it with other cities. But going at least to matching the current hundred-year standard just makes sense, but it's not the end. End for this. This will continue to come. And on the second one, I believe that having somebody that's watching our interests for drainage, continually watching the city's interest is a must, is a must. And it happens regardless of whether a bond passes or not. I think we have to have this resource in place, so.
It's for the position for increased standards for drainage, and what's the third thing?
Those are, the third thing is the resolution later tonight. Simply, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, getting into resolutions. We did the first one. Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirteen, a resolution of the city council of the City of Friendswood, Texas, authorizing and approving the two thousand and nineteen Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Program Application Combat Casualty Care Training. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Any questions for Brian? What are you going to spend this money on, Brian? This is grant money.
Yeah, and.
Combat casualty care training?
We haven't got it yet, but this is just showing support. We've put in for several grants to Homeland Security and UAWC this year. This one got favorable reviews from the UAWC committee. They use the funding source from last year as kind of a line where they think they're going to get funding for this year. They've asked us to go ahead and put this in for the full grant application and also to get support. It's for casualty care training, basically for firefighters that are not paramedics or EMTs, and also for police officers for those mass casualty or active attack type scenarios, so they can go in and help with those incidents.
Questions for Brian? All in favor? Thank you, Brian. Resolution twenty nineteen dash fourteen, resolution of the city council of the City of Friendswood, Texas, affirming the Drainage Subcommittee's findings that Friendswood is subject to high-intensity historic level of flooding events caused by Clear Creek being incapable of containing watershed rainwater within its current banks, necessitating a cause for action to pursue mitigation activities to better position the city for future flood events.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
As Mo said earlier, I just want to say that it seems a little pro forma, but, you know, our team felt like we really wanted the council to say, did we present enough information to make a cause for action, and that's the reason for this.
A verily. Okay, all in favor? Seven, nothing. Resolution twenty nineteen dash fifteen, a resolution adopting rules of procedure for the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Friendswood, Texas pursuant to authority contained in section two dash three of the Code of the City of Friendswood, Texas, and repealing resolution number twenty ten dash zero nine.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Resolution twenty nineteen dash sixteen, a resolution of the City of Friendswood, Texas, Galveston, Harris Counties endorsing the reapportment of four members and the appointment of one new member to the Galveston County United Board of Health. Motion in a second. All in favor? Ordinances. Ordinance number T twenty nineteen dash eleven, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for a tract or parcel containing one hundred and fifteen point nine nine eight acres located along the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard between West Ranch and Friendswood Lakes subdivisions, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to change from single-family residential to planned unit development or residential development Avalon at Friendswood.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. It's the second reading. Anyone want to discuss it?
Yes, I do. So, I made, I made the point at the last meeting and still didn't win the vote, but the development that's going in is a single-family residential development. So, we have requirements for single-family residential lots. The PUD is a way to circumvent that requirement. They're not developing anything outside of single-family residential. That's all they're doing. Every council member up here, including the mayor, said they have way too few ninety-foot lots, but we still voted for it. I don't understand why we allow single-family residential developments to circumvent the requirement of lot size. I would guess that the PUD in the original sense was created for people to develop garden homes or senior living facilities or things of that nature. I doubt very seriously that it was intended to circumvent the lot size requirement in the City of Friendswood. For eight years, we've told every developer but one to go away and come back when there's ninety-foot lots, including one very recently, and they accommodated our request and went back and put in ninety-foot lots. So, I don't understand why we have a single-family residential ordinance requiring a lot size, and then we allow ourselves through the process to circumvent that. There's nothing outside of this development that's anything other than single-family residential. Every one of us expressed a concern with the fact that there only seven percent of those lots are ninety-foot. Seven percent. Every person up here expressed that concern, but only three voted against it. I think if we have single-family residential requirements, we should stick to them. I think that it is a responsibility of the government to be consistent so that the developers that come to our community to develop their properties know what to expect. We have a requirement to do that. It's frustrating to me when we're up here and we don't know from one meeting to the next which way this development or that development's going to go. There shouldn't be a S in it. It should be consistent, and we've been consistent on the eight years that I've been up here with the exception of one time. Seven percent of the lots in this single-family residential development meet the minimum lot size requirement that we have laid out. I really, really, really wish, like you did on the development out at Dickinson Bayou, would reconsider your vote and require this developer and every developer after this that comes in to develop single-family residential to meet our lot size requirement.
I'd like to ask a question, and I know I should already have this data, but I don't. I know that right now they're proposing two hundred and six lots. If they had had all ninety-foot lots on this piece of property, wouldn't it have been like two eleven or two twelve? What was the number? Two thirty-two? It was two something.
Two thirty-six is, I believe, what they provided.
Two thirty-six, okay. So, in reality, they lowered the density for this area, this proposed project, even though I hear what Councilman Scott is saying, they're not ninety-foot lots, but they did reduce the density.
They.
For me, that's why I am supporting it, is because they were able to reduce the density from two hundred and thirty-six lots down to two hundred and six.
Okay, so, real quickly on that. They're reducing the density by setting aside a lot of land they're not developing. That's not reducing density. The houses are going to be stacked side by side. They're fifty-five and sixty-foot lots. That's how they get around the system. We're going to meet the density requirements because we're going to set aside our detention pond and not put anything there, or we may put a pocket park in there, and there won't be a house there, but we'll include all the green space and all the detention in our development for the total acreage and compare that to the number of homes. Well, because that portion is not developed, that gets factored into the equation, which says, hey, we meet the density requirements. The largest value of your home is your land that it's on. We don't have a lot of land left to develop. I don't understand. I mean, you have the last parcels of land, and we're going out of our way to stick houses side by side on them. It doesn't make any sense. What does the city gain by allowing guys to circumvent the single-family residential lot size requirement? What do we gain? I get it. If it's senior living, if it's garden homes, if it's something like that, that makes sense. They actually said they were catering to seniors. Well, then build a senior living facility. Build a senior development and call it that. But that's not what's happening. We're circumventing the system. There's no development going in outside of single-family residential homes, period.
Pete?
Make a comment here. We are not circumventing any system. It is the system. We have rules on residential lots, and we have rules that allow us to apply variances such as PUDs, like we're doing here. They're not circumventing any system whatsoever. There's no difference between these. These are ordinances. They're paired up. We can look at each piece of property and decide what we think is the best, given all a bunch of circumstances. It's not a matter of looking at one law and not looking at the other. We have this ability. It's not a circumvention.
Mayor Mike.
Robert.
I think everybody knows that I'm in agreement with John. I do not believe that we should move away from the ninety-foot lots, and I know that when I ran, the last time that I ran, not this most recent time, when I stood before the residents of Friendswood, I told them that I was going to go for ninety-foot lots, and we read the twenty-twenty vision, and there were a lot of people who ran under the same auspices that we were going to go with the highest, with the least amount of density that we could possibly go with, and it was going to be a lot more beneficial for the residents of Friendswood. And if this was a planned unit development for senior living, I would support it, where all the amenities were being shared by all the members of that little community, that would be something I could support. If this was price structured so that it was for millennials, with four hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand are not price structured for millennials moving into these homes, so this really isn't a planned unit development. It is a subdivision, and they have crammed as many houses as they can possibly get into the subdivision, which is not good for our schools. It's not good for our infrastructure over on Friendswood Lakes Boulevard when it gets built. It's not good for all the traffic problems that we have on five twenty-eight. It's the highest possible density that you could put on one hundred and seventeen acres or one hundred and fifteen point nine nine acres. So, I'm in agreement with John, and I'm going to do what I told the residents of Friendswood that I was going to do, and I'm going to vote the way that I told the people in Friendswood that I was going to vote. I'm going to vote and stay with ninety-foot lots.
Paul.
I'm inclined to agree with John on this. We do have requirements for neighborhoods, and there's nothing odd or difficult or strange about developing this piece of property. Point out, great bills are on the property. Connie and David, wonderful people. I just, I couldn't say enough nice things about you guys, and I want you to be able to sell your property. But these PUDs were set up to address square pegs going into round holes, not to find a way to not have to follow rules that are pretty well put in place. The last time one of these came up before us, I did support the change in opposition to Councilman Scott, but in that instance, the developer had some challenges in developing the property. There were some giant old oak trees that he was going out of his way to keep. There was additional green space he was putting in between an existing neighborhood, Sun Meadow, and his. There was that big horseshoe piece of property within Sun Meadow. They had to buy and then maintain in perpetuity, and there's a cost to doing that. And he also agreed to give up a big wedge-shaped piece of commercial property out on the main road in deference to the residents of Sun Meadow. And there was cost to him for doing that. And so, I didn't, in that instance, I didn't have a problem allowing him to recover some of the additional cost. He also pulled some apartments off the table that were allowed prior. So, that was a different instance. There's none of this problem with this piece of property at all. We're approaching build-out of fifty thousand. This is going to add to the dangers of pushing us over that fifty thousand number, where suddenly we become responsible for health services, we become responsible for traffic signal maintenance, and a host of other services that we are currently allowed to rely on the county for. It's also going to add impervious cover. We're up here talking about drainage and approving resolutions, affirming that we have a drainage problem, and that we're doing something that's going to add to it. It's, I think we ought to follow the rules we have in the book for developing lots, keep it at ninety feet, and if they can't make that work, I don't understand why they can't. There's, Dan Rucker made it work, a number of other neighborhoods in our city have made it work over the years. The Georgetown folks, as we pointed out, came back, decided they could make it work after all. It's, we don't want to grow fast like Pearland. We don't want to grow fast like League City, and putting this many, packing these houses in like this is going to, it's going to accelerate the growth, and I think we've been growing at a good rate. I think real good things are happening here in the city, and I think they'll continue to happen, but we're going to add a bunch of traffic, you know, that Friendswood Lake Boulevard is going to. is going to come through. This is going to add, I don't know. Well, it's going to add 250 houses worth of cars, so another 500, 750 cars a day, I'm sure, or more will be traveling on there. So I'm going to vote against it, and I would implore the four council members who did support this last time to please take one last deep look at your decision and consider what the consequences are going to be to the city long-term. Thank you.
So I called a lot of people about this because I wanted to know, why do we have this ordinance, 90 by 130? Why do we have that? What's the purpose of it? So I called people that have been here for a long time, that have served on council, that have knowledge. Also called Adam Hill, and I said, how do you feel about this if this is passed with you having adjacent property and you've been building houses on 90 by 130? To find out that he supported it and that he actually cosigned that application, right? So what I gathered from calling and talking to people is that the ordinance was there to reduce density. So if I understood this correctly, if they followed just 90 by 130 lots and forgot about the lake and forgot about other things, there would actually be more houses than what they're proposing right now. So I said last month, you know, I personally like the larger lots, but people are building such big houses that when you stick them on 90 by 130, they don't look like such big lots. Their backyards are small also. There is a market for that. So when this ordinance was passed many, you know, decades ago, their times have changed, and people want different things today. And if it's, maybe we need to question even why we have this ordinance anymore. Maybe we need to revisit this ordinance. But if it's truly for density, then what they've proposed lowers the density than if they just followed 90 by 130. I also looked at the people who are proposing this. So you have the Breakbills, and when I talked to Adam, you know, and he gave his blessing on that, you have families that have been here for multi-generations who love this community and who would never want to do anything to be detrimental to this community. So I've listened to Steve about, there is a process for doing this. I'm listening to, trying to take all of this in on the opposing view, but my mind and my thoughts are, it actually lowers the density, which was the intent of the 90 by 130. It's different today. Times have changed. People want different things today than they wanted 30 years ago or 35 years ago. So I'm not struggling with that. I know that Avalon is a good product. You know, you're going to have to pay for those streets. The people that buy that in a gated community will have other issues, and I'm sure all those things, I met with the developers as well, will be worked out, but I'm going to support and vote to support it.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Four to three. Second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 15 amendments and Chapter 70 vacation of street drainage, utility, or other public easement to change from joint public hearings to separate public hearings.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to second. This is where we separate our...
Joint public hearings.
Joint public hearings. Any discussion?
Finally make it happen?
I will say yes, but staff made me a liar last month, so yes, this was the last joint public hearing this evening.
Any questions? All in favor? Okay, ordinance T. 2019-14, second and final reading of an ordinance approving the execution of a developer participation agreement between the City of Friendswood, Coastal Bend Property Development LP, and Sur Construction Partners LLC.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion to second. Property out.
This is in front of... Surface water plant number two, right in front of Timber Creek Golf Course. This is a partnership to improve our unimproved roadway to our water plant to a concrete roadway.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Ordinance number T. 2019-17, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 8F off-street parking and loading regulations to relocate downtown district-related language to Section 8.N. 3 parking, and amendments...
Skip D. Sorry.
You guys could have told me that about 17 words ago.
You were so into it, we didn't have the heart.
Ordinance number T. 2019-16, first reading of ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 8.N. 1 geographic limits to amend the established boundaries of the downtown district map.
Second.
Motion to second. Any questions for Aubrey?
What did P and Z say?
Planning and zoning's recommendation on this was a negative recommendation. It was one to five. There was differences of opinions on change in the rules for, you know, individual property owners, having other options for other commercial zoning changes, and then in favor of zoning both lots as downtown district, and it's not an administrative burden on staff.
What other options do we have for this, Mo?
If council is not inclined to follow the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Committee, that's perfectly okay. From staff's recommendation, this is one of the, and I'll speak for myself, this is one of the few areas in the downtown district that doesn't have a logical conclusion or a logical terminus. If you look at the other sections of the downtown district, you have 2351 in one location, you have Laurel, you have Morningside, depending on which side of 518 you're looking at, or you have a natural barrier where you're going from an existing commercial or mixed commercial areas to a residential area. This section along Whispering Pines could have just as easily gone one more lot to include 110. It could have gone all the way to Cowards Creek. From staff's perspective, my recommendation is since the 108 and 110 are bifurcated under single ownership, but there are two different possibilities for zoning, is that in anything that is developed under a single zoning category, whether that's commercial or whether it's downtown district, is what I would recommend.
So is most of the P and Z's problem with this is that now we're creating sort of a special case that we have to keep track of because we have one that's, we can not ever apply downtown district funding to?
Yes, sir.
Is that the real hang-up?
From staff's perspective, that's not too difficult. We already have two different empowerment zones for the downtown district, the original empowerment district that went to roughly Castlewood, and then the section that was added from Castlewood to Cowards Creek down 518. We have a variety of ordinances in place that have different requirements for different areas, so we can just as easily flag this in the system.
The neighborhood, well, it would be up to Economic Development Corporation, but that's a resolution that could be easily amended, so I mean, that, you know, we could do away with that conflict, so.
For me, the most important thing was since this is actually being sold as one piece of property, I realize it was considered two separate pieces. I think it's important that the zoning be the same on both, so that was the reason I was going to be supporting this. And then I also agree with Mo, that the line there, if we ever had a case for extending our boundary, I think this is the case for that. And if it's not an accounting nightmare for the city, we're not putting undue burden on the city, then I just don't see any reason why we shouldn't move forward with this. So I'll be supporting this.
Steve.
Yeah, similarly, it's, the piece of property has a piece of property behind it that's in the downtown district right now.
Correct.
Sort of a wedge-shaped one, has that Reach Church and all that that's on the one side. Property owners want it to go into the downtown district. It's not going to be a hassle for the city to manage. It's, the property owners are long, long-time Friendswood residents. I just don't see the downside to doing this.
Anybody else? Carl, John, any comments? Okay. All in favor? Sorry, P and Z. Now I can do D. Is that right? Ordinance number T. 2019-17, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 8.F off-street parking and loading regulations to relocate downtown district-related language to Section 8.N. 3 parking, and amendments to reduce the head-in parking distance requirements from 400 feet to 75 feet, including minor grammatical corrections.
Motion to approve.
Motion to second.
This was a unanimous positive recommendation by Planning and Zoning.
Any discussion? All in favor? F. Ordinance number T. 2019-18, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 7.I and Section 8.N. 4 to allow cement fiber board installed as lap siding in the downtown district, Section 8.N. 4 to change the administration requirements in the downtown district, and Section 8.N. 4 to restate that service laterals must be installed underground, prohibit garage bay doors from fronting FM 518 in certain situations, limit exterior building colors to earth tone colors, require that screening materials match the main structure, and add a reference to dumpster screening requirements, including minor grammatical corrections.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
This was a unanimous recommendation by Planning and Zoning as well, six to zero.
All in favor? Golf. Ordinance number T. 2019-19, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 8.N. 8 adjacent property buffer maintenance and installation, duplicating requirements for buffering from Section I. 2 perimeter landscaping and screening, and amendments to Section 8.N. 3 parking, duplicating requirements for parking from Section I. 2.C off-street parking landscaping, relocating language PUD modification from Section 8.H modification of standards proposed within a PUD to Section 7.J PUD planned unit development, general purpose and description, including minor grammatical corrections.
Motion. Second.
P and Z's recommendation was unanimous on this one.
Unanimous? All in favor? Hotel. Ordinance number T. 2019-20, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix A signs, Section 9 prohibited signs to prohibit LED and similar storefront lights in the downtown district boundary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
P and Z's recommendation was unanimous on this one as well?
Anything you can see from space should probably not be allowed in downtown district. All in favor? India. Ordinance number T. 2019-21, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting budget amendment seven to the original general budget of the City of fiscal year 2018-2019.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, item 19, communication from the mayor and council members. Steve.
You have a couple of items. The first two, the first one is, I've noticed that the street that's going into the property behind Starbucks has been built. That street makes that, is going to make that a two-way traffic, and it is going to be a mess. People line up and are going to be in the wrong lane, going through the carpool of the Starbucks. People already park on the other side so bad that the bank has to hire a police officer to keep them out, and you see cars stopping and people running back and forth. Anybody coming out of that new development in the right lane is going to have to swerve into the left lane into oncoming traffic. I understand all the reasons that that was considered a public street, but I'm just here to say, we are creating the world's most gigantic road rage situation, and we are going to get somebody hurt. And I believe that we should, you know, I'd like to ask that the city look at that and come back with some recommendations that will greatly improve the safety there, so just a request. Similarly, you know, the nice brick sidewalks that we put in front of City Hall and Stevenson Park are literally marked from stem to stern with what's called utility graffiti. Utility people put these hieroglyphics on it, up and down it, and constantly putting them over again and over again and over again, and it looks terrible. Absolutely terrible. Now, again, I understand the safety aspects. They have to, they're doing lines and all that, but I really wish we could look at something that would require a paint that could be taken off easier. I mean, it takes a year or two for that paint to wear off, and by then they've put these symbols down five more times. Next time you go down, look at that brand-new sidewalk we put in there and how bad it looks. It just looks terrible. So again, I would ask that we look at, talking to the utility companies or figuring something out that we can just, you know, it just ruins the look of the park. And the last thing on a positive note, we had the May the Fourth celebration at the library. It was really well attended. I think they had, over the normal number of people that come in on Saturday, they had six or 700 more people come. A lot of them were kids in costumes. They had a great time. It was a terrific event, so.
Thank you. Sally?
I'll just be short and sweet. I wanted to let everybody know that the month of July is going to be very exciting, and not just because of the Fourth of July. We're going to be celebrating the 50th anniversary of Apollo 11 splashdown, which technically is July the 24th, but the library and all kinds of folks all across the community are getting involved in helping us with this celebration. And if you think about it, NASA is pretty much what put Friendswood on the map, so I think it's very, very appropriate that we are celebrating this, and we're going to celebrate it right. So I just want to invite anybody and everybody who's interested in participating in this, reach out to me, Steve Rocky, Mayor Foreman, Brett Banfield. We'd love to have you join us. James Tony is going to help us out. Matt Riley is going to be helping us out, so we've got lots. Jeff Newfer is going to be helping us out. I'm calling out all your names right now, so you're all guilty. No, it'll be a lot of fun, and we'd love to have as many folks as possible participate. It'll be a month-long celebration of NASA. Thanks.
Trish.
Okay, I'd like to compliment the two committees that I serve on, CDC and the July 4th. You heard from Barbara tonight. Those people do a fantastic job, and they work well with James and his staff, and they've got this down. They have got this down, and I really applaud them. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work that day and the night before, and I really thank them for that because that's a special tradition in our community. And Karen has helped facilitate visits to some of our businesses, and we're going on one this week to Boatright. Boatright Boat Marine, Boatright Marine. So that'll be fun to go to that, and thank you, Karen, for facilitating those things. And then the last thing is, there is an organization called Bay Area Alliance for Youth and Families, and they have been very involved in the Clear Creek Schools for years, and we have supported them for several years in Friendswood because they work with families and youth who need assistance to try to get our youth to make healthy choices with drug and alcohol, you know, staying away from those things, but to educate them and to help them make healthy choices. And, you know, you can't have a vibrant community and a safe place if we don't raise our youth right, correct? So they have a big fundraiser, and I don't know why I said yes, but because they're such a good charity. They have a Dancing With The Stars event in September, and I agreed to make a fool of myself for 90 seconds, along with the police chief and Webster Bowe. I tried to get our police chief, but they had already gotten him. And so you go online, and you can vote. It costs a dollar to vote, but I don't want to, you know, I'm the only person from Friendswood, so I'm representing Friendswood, so I'm expecting you guys and lady to help me out here. So I'm going to pass these along. And if anybody in the audience wants them, I'll give them to you, too. I am soliciting for votes. I am soliciting for some votes.
You guys are doing some kind of a breakdance kind of thing?
I have no idea what we're doing yet. I have no idea. We just started this, but I can already tell you that I have deep regret. Deep regret. Would have rather just written a check, but I'm kind of committed now, and so I figure I've made a fool of myself for longer than 90 seconds, plenty of times, so this, you know, I can live through this one, too.
I want to say that I want to congratulate Murad Kabiri. We just celebrated his one-year anniversary as our city manager, and I want to say what a great job Murad has been doing. Thank you. You stepped up and hit it out of the park, Murad, and I know you were under the tutelage of a pretty good city manager before you stepped in as our city manager now, but you really have done a magnificent job, and you've got a wonderful staff that you're leading, and great job all around.
Just a quick public announcement. Next...
Just a quick public announcement, next Tuesday, May the 14th, the Clear Creek Watershed Steering Committee will be having a workshop immediately following the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District meeting with the GLO. So if you would like to come, there'll be all the stakeholders along the Clear Creek Watershed that will be there, and we will be workshopping with the GLO. They're wanting some public information from us, and we're just gonna be meeting there. It's probably about nine, it takes about an hour, eight o'clock to nine o'clock for the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, and then immediately following that, we'll have that meeting. And then we'll have another Clear Creek Watershed Steering Meeting after that, but that's all I have.
Great. John?
Two things real quick, I'd like to hitchhike off the mayor's comments. One-year anniversary for Murad being our city manager. I was here when we decided to create a position to, the assistant city manager position in an effort to hold on to Mo because we knew how valuable he would be to our community. And he's everything we thought he would be and more. He does anything that's asked of him. His ability to communicate with the staff and employees, as well as unbelievably with me even, is above and beyond. So, again, congratulations, the city is much, much better off having someone like you serve it. On the service side of it, I know there'll be another meeting coming up, May 13th, to canvass the election and stuff. For the people that volunteer to be a part of this governing body and to put yourself out there and subject yourself to everything that goes on through a campaign is a lot. And to do it in an election in a city where the pay is zero is really a lot. And so, you know, I heard of some of the goings-on and everything else, and how nasty campaigns can be and this and that and the other. I would just, for one, like to say, you know, for all of your badmouthing, try running for the position yourself. Because so many like to sit back behind their computer and take cheap shots at people that, quite honestly, have volunteered their time for no money. No money. So, you know, over the last six years, Carl and I have not seen eye to eye on a lot of things. But that does not take away from his contributions to the city and his desire to serve our community. I hate the way the political landscape is today across this country. And when it gets this way in our own community, that's a problem. So for me personally, thank you for your service. I would look forward to working with Brent, working, coming forward. It's a, it's an awesome, humbling experience to be able to serve in your community and to be elected by the citizens. So, so good luck to Brent going forward. Thank you so much, Carl, for your efforts over the last six years, and I just hope in the future that elections remain so.
Well, thank you very much, John. It's no secret, there was an election on Saturday, and it didn't work out too well for me. I've enjoyed my six years up here on council. I want to say thank you to everybody up here that I've served with. I want to thank staff, Mary Kay, Mo, Melinda up here, but all of you. I want to thank Parks and Rec, I want to thank the Police Department, Emergency Management, the Fire Department, the Finance Department, Economic Development. Folks who don't get to spend the time with city staff that I was able to spend over the six years really don't understand the gem that we have here. I know I didn't when I started. We've got some of the most capable, well-qualified people anywhere. There's just no place I wouldn't put them up against. And they've been a tremendous help to me over the years. I wouldn't have been able to do the job, half as good a job as I think I did, without their assistance. You can always depend on them, reliable, accountable. I didn't get a lot of complaints as a city councilman, and I didn't get a lot of complaints because staff does a good job. I think, just really, thank you. And to those of you that supported me, I'm sorry it didn't work out a little differently, but thank you, and I guess I've got about two more votes up here, and that's gonna be it, but thanks a bunch. I appreciate it, loved every minute of it.
Do you have a motion you want to make, Carl?
Do we need to do this?
You can do it anytime.
I'd like to make a motion that we provide our city manager with a raise of 5.5%.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.